The Board of Education meeting is hereby called and ordered. We do have the presence of a quorum. We will begin with our act of reverence and pledge allegiance to the flag, led by our student rep, Sarah DeLos.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will begin with the acceptance of minutes. We have several sets of minutes that board members should have received in their packets. There are minutes from July 14 special meeting, minutes from the July 22 special meeting, minutes from the July 23 business meeting, minutes from the July 28 special meeting, minutes from July 30 quest committee charter school hearing, minutes from the August 4 special meeting, and minutes from the August 11 special meeting. As you can see, we did, we had a lot of meetings in July. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes. So moved. It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Vice President White. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, any abstentions? The ayes have it. Student recognition, we have none, but we will resume that with our, with schools starting back in September. Speakers addressing an agenda item. Because we only have six speakers tonight, we have three on and three off agenda. I'm just gonna have, go through all six speakers now. So, and we'll start with Cheryl Marshall, who is, will be our first speaker, and Cheryl Marshall will be followed by Vicky Gouvea. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I would ask that when you hear the beep from the clerk, that you please conclude your remarks. This will prevent me from having to cut you off. So we'll begin with Cheryl Marshall. Is Cheryl here?
Hi, yes. That's okay.
Good evening.
Many of you know me. I'm Cheryl Marshall. I am president of the PTSA at School of the Arts, and I have a rising 10th grader there. I'm here tonight to say thank you, first all. Thank you for listening to the parents, the teachers, and other community members that asked you to reconsider cutting our arts and music teachers, along with our school social workers and psychologists. Sadly, in the staffing crisis that ensued over the summer, we did in fact at SOTA lose a very skilled and remarkable young music teacher. She was laid off and then recruited and has accepted a position at Brighton High School. And so the students there will have the benefit of her passion and her skills in this coming year. It's still an unknown what sort of teacher, and when we'll have one to take her place. But the good news is eventually someone will take her place. We are looking forward to a great school year with all the promise that a new school year holds. But I do, I come here tonight to ask the board, as you continue to look for ways to save money and cut expenses in this large and complex school district, you look carefully and strategically at those cuts, at where those cuts can and should be made. Please don't simply say yes to whatever crosses your desk first. Ask the hard questions, fully consider the unintended consequences, and ask if there's a different or better way to achieve the same result. We will continue to work hard at SOTA to create a community of students, parents, and teachers that are active and involved, and work for the benefit of all of the city school students. And we look forward to partnering with the district in new and innovative ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky Gouvea?
Good evening, Commissioner Evans, members of the board, Superintendent Bresard. I've come to address the Board of Education this evening because of a chain of events that are unprecedented in recent past. As a part of the annual budget process, school principals were asked to take a look at their school budgets and to make do with less for the 2009-2010 school year. This reduction included a directive to reduce staff within their schools. This is never an easy decision for principals, but like many other tasks that they complete on a daily basis, they made these difficult recommendations based on the needs of their students. In fact, principals were given very little latitude as to where to cut the positions from. In the end, what soon became known as "on top of" staff was where the cuts came from. This, in many cases, included cuts in the areas of art, music, psychologists, and social workers. These were agonizing decisions for principals, especially when they were directed to meet with their staff that was affected and give them the news of the displacement or layoff. Many principals said to me that this was one of the most difficult days in their career, when they had to deliver this news to the teachers that they had worked with during the year. It becomes very personal at this level, and is no longer an exercise to balance a budget. As a Board of Education, your responsibility is to submit a balanced budget to the City of Rochester, which you did. It was only after this budget was submitted and accepted that the board began to scrutinize the specific cuts and question the actions of principals, even suggesting that principals acted in a potentially reckless manner. On August 4, the board voted to reinstate a number of positions. And let me be perfectly clear here. I am not here objecting to these reinstatements, but to the impact it has had on the district. Tonight, just two days before school starts, principals are scrambling to fill positions in their schools. Your actions on August 4 caused a ripple effect across the district that is being felt by the very people that you chose to criticize for their actions, building principals. By August 4, principals have already created a master schedule, established class lists, began a plan for professional development for the start of the school year, only to find out with the reinstatement of all teachers, all of their work now needed to be redone to accommodate the latest board actions. A shift as small as point two, FTE can cause an entire master schedule to be redone. In addition, the reinstatement of teachers simply means that the district has no reserve of teachers. So when enrollment shifts in the fall, the only alternative will be to disrupt schools and reorganize classes, impacting the lives of our children.
Okay, Vicky Gouvea?
So, I'm concluding.
Okay, thank you, please.
So while we constantly hear that principals are being held accountable for what happens or doesn't happen in their school, I find it insulting that this board would publicly criticize the actions of principals who were simply doing what they were directed to do. In the future, if this board has questions about the actions of principals or administrators in this district, I encourage you to give me a call. I'll be happy to share with you the real deal, in hopes of preventing you from publicly chastising principals without the full story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My struggle with the Rochester City School District has rarely been of a personal nature. However, in light of the superintendent's press release regarding a commissioner's attack on his integrity, I felt it important to follow his lead by defending the public attack on my personal and professional integrity by my administrator and the superintendent. With respect to the superintendent's request to come before him, before going to the press, I did follow the district's chain of command in reporting events that I felt were contrary to the healthy and successful education of children. While expecting nothing more than a termination of these and any further events of a similar nature, I was instead personally maligned by my administrator and the superintendent in an email communique that was sent to members of the superintendent's staff, school board members, and the Board of Regents. While it is true that I was assigned 12 5th grade students in the 07-08 school year, it is also true that of the 12 students I was assigned, only four had passed either or both the 4th grade ELA and math state tests. As well, I team taught with the other regular education teacher delivering math and science portion of the curriculum, meaning I actually taught 26 students in math and science. This group held the largest percentage of growth in math. Whenever a substitute was necessary for the other regular education teacher, I volunteered to teach both classes, saving the school the effort of securing a substitute and the district thousands of dollars in substitute pay. While the integrated class was assigned 16 students, there was one general education teacher and one special education teacher, each having their own student teacher, making the student teacher ratio for their class 4 to 1. Given this ratio, my student success equals that of the integrated class in math and English language arts. Commissioner White asked why concerned teachers did not volunteer their time, offering students extended learning opportunities. During my time as a teacher, I hosted after-school game clubs, science clubs, African dance clubs, chess clubs, after-school tutoring, and stayed at school most nights until 7 o'clock in case students and their parents needed help with the assigned homework. I also provided parents with weekly updates of their child's progress. In the three years I was assigned to school six, I had one of the highest, if not the highest attendance percentages of the school. All of these facts could and can be easily checked by the superintendent had he come to me personally for a response to the allegations sent to him by my administrator. However, it was the superintendent's choice to make public these less than accurate statements without regard for my personal or professional integrity. The district's most recent response to what they deemed inappropriate behavior on my part is to remove me from the classroom for nearly a year, in which time most of my students failed their math test, and then reassign me to school number 45 as a building substitute, at my normal salary, of course. And while I accept whatever God has given me with a positive attitude and the willingness to do my best, this is a disgraceful waste of educational resources and taxpayer dollars. If this type of uninformed decision-making is to be expected from the superintendent and accepted by the school board, how can this community find any confidence in the financial decisions made on the expenditures of our hard-earned dollars? I implore the board to lurk more deeply into the decisions made by the superintendent and administrators, especially in the light of the newly adopted policy of administrative autonomy. Thank you.
Thank you. Dell Smith? Dell would be followed by Charlie Richardson.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the board. My name is Delmonzi Smith. I'm a business professor at RIT, where I teach entrepreneurship and organizational behavior. I'm also the president of DA Smith &amp; Associates, a strategic HR and IT management company, which I might add is a proud RCSD pencil partner. I sit on the board of the Rochester Black Business Association and the regional chapter of the National Academy Foundation. I can only imagine the challenges you face as you seek to provide a quality education for more than 34,000 students, and devoting resources towards increasing the district's use of well-qualified minority and women-based businesses probably appears pale in comparison to the many challenges you face. So I'm encouraged to see, per the 2009-2010 budget, a proposed expenditure of approximately $100,000 for the Office of Minority Business, Minority and Women Business Enterprise, otherwise known as MWBE. It is my belief that you approve this funding for three primary reasons. First, you recognize that we live in a community where many of our well-qualified minority businesses have a stake in what happens to our youth. Our minority businesses vitally depend on having a qualified workforce to compete, not just locally, but globally. And as you state in your mission, you seek to partner with the Rochester community to prepare students to be productive members of that workforce. Second, I cannot tell you how many minority entrepreneurs I come across who proudly share that they are themselves graduates of the Rochester City School District. Considering that 86% of our student population is African-American or Hispanic, it is a good chance that the district is not only educating our future workforce, but also our future entrepreneurs. The very entrepreneurs who are creating jobs and contributing to our economic tax base. Third, by approving the Office of MWBE funding, you obviously recognize that many of the challenges you deal with, from how to more effectively deliver instruction, to providing professional development for teachers, to even increasing parental engagement, can be solved by many of the well-qualified minority companies that exist, the very ones that you helped develop. My hope, and I believe I speak for other well-qualified minority businesses, is that the district will continue to find ways to engage and encourage value-added relationships with minority companies. This does not have to happen using questionable quotas, but rather a genuine and sincere effort on the part of the district to do business with well-qualified minority companies that can provide practical solutions to the district's challenges. I thank you for your time.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again. I would just need to clarify, even though I belong to several organizations in Rochester, I'm not speaking for any of them. I'm speaking for the 174 parents that elected me as a community member to represent them in schools and the Board of Education. And I'm here for a report tonight. Number one, we have a big, big problem, and you already know it, at Franklin School. We don't have leaders down there. We have people that should not be in that position, for the simple reason is, for six years, they've never had parents involved. They are out of compliance with Title I and no child left behind, because they don't even invite meetings to, or our parents to their meetings. And they've held several of them. I have tried to meet with them to find out what we can do. It's nothing. Here are some of the things that are happening. Okay? There is no pride in that school. And let me show you what happened. I asked how many teachers had been let go, and all he said, eight. And I asked him which ones. Well, he wasn't sure all of them, but one of them was music. I thought we just fought for that last month, that we were going to have music teachers, because why? To build pride with the students and to keep them in school and keep them active. They'd like to have a marching band to get. But, they're not going to have the opportunity under that leadership. With that leadership, I'll tell you, I was there for about a half hour with Melina Lucion, who happens to be the parent of Lea's son. She hasn't been back to work yet, even though Cheryl Wheeler and Title I approved that money, but in somebody else. She was hired last year in November, didn't even know about Title I till I brought it up, and we finally got some money this year for the first time in six years. She needed to get out letters to the parents and be able to meet with all the 7th graders coming in. She wasn't there all summer, because there was no coverage for her. Now they said officially she'll be going back to work next week. That's too late. We, while I was there for that half hour, three parents come in wanting to transfer their children out of Franklin. The reason why? Two of them had students for the last three years going to summer school that failed all three years. There is no pride down there. And I'll tell you, it's with the teaching staff also. There's a lot of good teachers there, innovative ideas, but it's being stopped. And when, as I, as an elected official, have to give 48 hours to go into that building, to work with the parent Lea's son of building that, I think that something needs to be done. Now, I know some board members have been down to some meetings down there, and I certainly appreciate that. Okay, Mr. White, I think you're very aware of what's going on down there. And again, the rest of you, I suggest you get down there and just take a look, please. And again, we do thank you, because you know, look what happened with parents who got involved about the food service. And I'll tell you, the parents are really happy about that. And the Board of Education, you and Mr. Williams, watch that up, Mrs. Elliott. And I'll tell you what, we need to do more of that to listen to these parents. Thank you very much.
Good evening. In addition to my position here at central office, I'm also the secretary for ASAR. And as such, I'd like to read to you a letter that was written by the ASAR Executive Council. Dear Superintendent Bresard and Commissioners, this letter from ASAR Executive Council is written in the spirit of collaboration, cooperation, and most importantly, with the well-being of the Rochester City School District children as the paramount concern. The ASAR Executive Council agrees with the philosophy that more in-school time will correlate with improved academic achievement. As requested, we have adopted and implemented the new suspension policy, despite the fact that this policy limits administrators' ability to use suspension as a disciplinary tool. The concern of the ASAR Executive Council is the disconnect between the philosophy of the policy and its implementation and limitations. For example, inconsistent staffing, lack of funding, overall safety concerns, and a general lack of communication with key stakeholders. ASAR requests a vigorous review of this new policy. What we need is to determine whether the policy is serving the needs of our students in the spirit in which it was written. If this policy, if it's determined that the current policy is lacking, we would like to address how the policy and its implementation can be improved in order to ensure that the policy meshes with the expected practice and outcomes that result in meeting the needs of our students. As a first step, the ASAR Executive Council requests that a working group of your choosing be convened jointly with ASAR as a collaborative process to review and evaluate the current practices associated with the policy. ASAR proposes that the following questions be included in the rigorous review. If the goal of in-school suspension is to increase student achievement, have we been successful? Have adequate measures been established to ensure the safety of students, faculty, and staff who are deeply involved with this process? Have we, as a district, done an adequate job of communicating the culture shift that is necessary to make this effort successful, particularly with the stakeholders who are affected the most, our students and parents? How can the implementation of this policy be improved? We await your response and look forward to beginning this process together. Sincerely, ASAR Executive Council.
That concludes our speakers. We will now move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent?
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Quite a bit tonight, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. First and foremost, just to talk a little bit about the opening of school next week. Despite all the challenges that we often face as an open school district, we feel quite good about the readiness for our schools to open next week, thanks to the wonderful work of our teachers and principals. As was mentioned earlier on by the ASAR president, our principals have been at this for a very, very long time, supported by their staff, including, by the way, School 33, which is a brand-new facility that will open this fall. Thanks to the wonderful work being done by our facilities' folks, by the principal and his staff, the school is ready to open. We have a few staffing issues that we are addressing, but not more, more, I guess, difficult than we usually face as an open school system, despite recent happenings in the district. Today, I had a chance to go to Monroe High School and visit with about 65 or 70 students that participated in an advanced placement readiness conference for a week. As you know, we have a multimillion-dollar grant from the federal government called Advanced Placement Initiative that will prepare our kids to take advanced placement courses from calculus to statistics to world history to literature, et cetera. This wonderful work was done by a number of teachers and administrators. The site was at Monroe High School. Also want to thank Barbara Hassler for coordinating the work that was done this past, this past week. As was requested, we have, I have an update on the food services program, and I'm going to keep that for last. But instead, talk a little bit about some of the initiatives we have, we've had this You have in your packets a review of three different programs we implemented last year. In-school suspension will be done in September. We're still going through the numbers of suspensions for the district, perhaps even addressing some of the questions that were just raised a few minutes ago. But let me first start with the Dream Schools Initiative, led by Michelle Hancock. Michelle, thank you for your wonderful work this, this past year in leading that initiative. As you know, this was a way for us to take a look at our most struggling schools in the district. Your packets include a comprehensive report for each one of these, but I'll give you the highlights that you may find in the reports. The goal for the Dream Schools was to create The goal for the Dream Schools was to create sustained significant change in six low-performing schools. School number eight, school number five, International Finance Career High School of Franklin, Global Media Arts High School of Franklin, Thomas Jefferson High School, and Wilson Foundation Academy. Some of the core elements that we put into this program, one was to have an executive coach for each principal, an intervention specialist, and coherent set of interventions, including advisory groups, excellent learning in literacy and mathematics, multi-year grouping, looping, et cetera. After-school tutoring, extended day, extended week, a uniform curriculum with interim assessments that inform interventions and adjustment, an onsite staff development coordinator in ELA and mathematics, data stewards for effective data-driven decision-making, targeted class size reduction, support for students' emotional needs, instructional technology. We have at least one model classroom in each school, and of course, intense professional development. Very quickly, the results. All six schools showed tremendous improvements, gains in English Language Arts. Five showed achievement gains in mathematics. One school was moved off the search list in one year. It was Wilson Foundation Academy. Again, congratulations to all the wonderful work done by these six schools. All of the schools reported their achievements in town hall meetings at the end of the year. And the assessment teams, of course, which include the parents, school district, school and district personnel, executive coaches, dream school consultant, et cetera, provided critical feedback to inform our work for 2009, 2010. So based on our findings, we're making some tweaks and some changes for this year. We've included now East High School as part of the Dream Schools Initiative for the '09, '10 school year. Wilson Foundation came off the search list, and technically, does not need to be in the Dream Schools, but we did not want to drop them off completely, but they'll continue to receive support, and perhaps even use some of the expertise in that school to inform the work of the other schools. The second report you have in your packet is the Young Adult Evening High School Program. As you know, this program was created to address the needs of students who are 17 years older, who are in danger of dropping out of high school mostly because of adult issues. So the program was located at Freddie Thomas High School and run by Tony Robinson, a program administrator. The idea was to provide opportunity for students in danger of dropping out to retrieve credits and graduate high school. We provided students with a different time schedule. They came to school in the afternoon into the evenings. We had dedicated teachers to the program, and it was, we didn't have teachers coming in for after-school programming, but were full-time staff at the school. We accelerated opportunity for credit retrieval. We had targeted academic support. Each student was paired with a staff member as a mentor. In terms of the program, we served 67 students last year, 47 males, 47 females, 20 male. Eighty-four percent were African-American, 13 percent Hispanic, 3 percent Asian, and 3 percent were English-language learners. 10 percent of the students were students with disabilities. The average daily attendance was 81 percent, and of the 53 potential graduates, 40 of them graduated this past year. That is a 76 percent graduation rate at the site. 10 graduated in January 2009, 23 in June 2009, 7 in August 2009. Part of our work this year is to begin to take a look at ways of making the program year-round and having a rolling admissions program so students can graduate throughout the year versus waiting for the end of each semester for an assessment. So the program, we feel, has been successful, and we're looking to increase the number of students we are serving in the program. The last you have in your packet is the I'm Ready program. The I'm Ready program, as you know, was provided for long-term suspension for students. If you recall, prior to that program, students who were suspended for six days or more were only given two hours of instruction. So this program was provided to provide students with an extended learning environment where they could continue the work they were doing in their day school. So we had the core academic programs, the core ELA, math, science, and social studies, provided a ton of supportive services for social and emotional growth. The program partnered with the Center for Youth, Pathways to Peace, and the Center for Dispute Settlement. 950 students were assigned, grade seven to grade 12, throughout the year. 84 percent African-American, 13 percent Hispanic, 3 percent white or other. 3 percent English-language learners, 11 percent students with disabilities. 88 percent of the students were assigned to the program only once, which means that we had only a 12 percent of recidivism rate, which we feel was a huge success. 35 percent of students who were assigned to the program never attended. We do our no-shows. This is something we are looking to address, of course, for this coming year. But again, the recidivism, we feel, was a big success for the program. The last report you will get at the next board meeting or prior will be the safety initiative that we had here last year, which includes, of course, the in-school suspension program. We go through the data before we produce the program for you. This year, one of the major changes, again, aside from others, that you will see if you've not been to some of our high schools, was a delivery of X-ray machines for each high school, for each secondary site in the district. We have a couple of schools that may not get them until October, but for now, the majority of our high schools will have an X-ray machine in addition to the walkthroughs that you see. So the idea is for book bags and other things to go through the machine to minimize the number of weapons actually getting to our schools. We feel that if places like East High School had this system in place last year, the gun that was found in the school would not have been there. So our safety officers have been trained on this program throughout the summer, and they'll be in place for the beginning, for the opening of school. I urge you, if you get a chance to go, please, and visit. Commissioner Elliott had asked for an update on the food services program. It's my last piece for this morning, for this evening, I'm sorry. As you know, we have a new contract with Aramark Food Services. And if I may ask, if Leslie Fowler is here, just stand up and just wave, our new director, person coordinating work for us with food services, she's a tremendous individual. So, quick highlights I just passed over to you. Contracts with SAD, menus, production records, et cetera. A lot of work has been done. I sent you some photos where even our deputy superintendent for administration was there with his overalls, cleaning and getting ready for the opening of school. A lot of work has been done on ordering of food, inventory process, customer service, safety, et cetera. We feel so far, in the short time that Aramark has been in the district, the amount of work done has been tremendous, and we are very, very happy and grateful for them being here. As you know, this was a community-wide effort, and I especially want to thank the Finger Lake Health Association, Wade Norwood, the Wegmans Foundation, and everyone else who really got involved in this, including the Community Foundation, I'm sure I'll forget someone. A lot of people put their hands together to try and make this a success for this coming year. We will not fix all of it in one year, but we've made tremendous strides in a few months in making this work. I also have two copies of the Food Service Resource Guide given to principals and administrators in the district. I need to print a copy for each one of you, because it's a 46-page document. But if you'd like to have it electronically, I can forward it to you via email. Thank you. It's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Questions from the superintendent regarding school food service, the I'm Ready program, the Dream Schools program, and also the Young Adult Evening High School that he just mentioned?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah. I just wanted to know why the good news hasn't gotten out regarding disruption, the reduction in disruptive and violent incidences. I understand they've gone down 40 percent, and my additional understanding, actually, I read about this, I think, in city newspaper. I think Mr. Macaluso did a blog on it, or there was an article about it, and that there's been a reduction in suspensions of 37 percent. Maybe I got the numbers mixed up. But this is good news, and no offense to the city newspaper, but I think the word of this good news should have gotten out a little bit broader. Is there any intention of doing that?
Absolutely.
And let me just say, Mr. Superintendent, because credit should go to Jim Shepherd, and I know you've probably given plenty of kudos for this, but this was hard work. It began with an audit of, the security audit of all the schools. I know Commissioner Campos and I went to the very first one. Jim Shepherd was there. I think it was one of the first things that he did. This reduction did not happen by accident, and I think people need to know about it because people need to know our schools are safer and they're better now.
Commissioner, absolutely. Except that, as much as I love Jim Shepherd, this was a cooperative effort, including Jim, of course, but a number of individuals, and again, not because my principals are here or ASAR is here, but our teachers and principals really put their heads together. Despite some of the noise you heard last year in November, a lot of work was put into this. One thing that was said in that letter, which I believe is absolutely correct, it is a fundamental paradigm shift in culture, where you had students, of course, who were being put out in the streets, who are now in school. It is not a perfect implementation. I think all of us will agree to that. But the fact is, the numbers have gone down. We are looking to verify the final numbers before we begin to go even more public with this. I believe on September 1st, myself and Jim Shepherd are scheduled to be on XXI to talk about some of these initiatives. We think the X-ray machines will be an added safety piece to the work that we have to do in terms of making our schools safer. As a parent, I can tell you that the most important thing for me is that when I drop my daughter off of school, that I know she's going to come back home the same way I dropped her off at. Instruction, academic learning is important, but I think for a parent, that's almost secondary to safety. So that is something we're taking very seriously and something we intend to trumpet about in terms of making sure that people know the wonderful work that was done in our schools. But second, we also have to acknowledge the fact that this is not a one-year effort. Know by no means is it a done deal. We've got so much more to do. When you hear about student safety on the way to school and the way home, it is something we worry about. We don't have much control, unfortunately, of all of that, but we worry about it as well. It is something we intend to trumpet. Once we have the final report done, it is being processed in-house. We want to be secure in all of our words before we actually publish it completely to everyone. But it is something, it is work that we're proud of. Again, much more needs to be done to make sure that we continue to improve the program.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Follow-up on that same point that Commissioner White raised. The fact that the city newspaper was able to report on this and no word through the Democrat Chronicle, doesn't that give credibility to Commissioner Brennan's oft-repeated arguments that the Democrat Chronicle has no business being a paper of record when it receives this information but refuses to print it?
Is that a question for me?
Well, consider it rhetorical.
I think it was more rhetorical.
It's for the record.
I think it was a very good question, actually.
Other questions?
President Abrams?
Commissioner Elliott?
In reference, Mr. Superintendent, you mentioned that the chief of human resources also led the Dream School Initiative, is that correct?
Yes.
How can she lead the Dream School Initiative with all the work that needs to be done in human resources? In case in point, let me just point out, and I will point it out during the review of the resolutions, there are still resolutions that are coming to us after the fact. So it would appear to me that she has a lot to do in human resources and that her resources, her personal resources, need to be limited to what happens in human resources. Why are we having her to do to lead the Dream School Initiative? Doesn't that make sense to me?
I will let Dr. Hancock talk a little before. You can come up, Dr. Hancock. But before she actually begins to talk, let me just say that since I've been here 20 months now in the city of Rochester, I have not yet met someone more capable and competent in the work of instruction.
I'm not questioning her competence.
I understand, Commissioner.
What I'm saying is that she's got these two things that she's doing. HR should be sufficient for her to be responsible for.
Okay. I guess I'll repeat what I've said before, and in terms of the resolutions, the ones coming after the fact for human resources, I think we've talked about this a number of times, that very often, it is beyond our control if someone is going to take a leave of absence or resign, et cetera, or take a family medical leave of absence. So very often, these things have...
Those resolutions are referenced.
If I may.
I'll just point out.
Yes. Maybe we can get some specifics later on, but I can tell you, there's quite a bit of due diligence done by the entire team on the first floor, and I'm making sure things come as timely as possible to the Board of Education. Dr. Hancock?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioner Elliott, thank you for your inquiry. When we redesigned the departments, I was responsible as chief of professional development, leadership development, and diversity. When we moved toward a human capital initiative framework, we combined my department with human resources and renamed it Human Capital Initiatives. That meant that the department was now responsible for career ladder development for all district employees. With that merger came additional staff with me. So in terms of the amount of work that we have to do, yes, there is a tremendous amount of work to do within any human capital organization or department. However, I do feel that I am sufficiently staffed to be able to handle all of those responsibilities. And since my tenure in this position, yes, there are many things that we are working towards to improve, but many of the issues in which you have spoken about is that we have explained in the past, and we will continue to explain why, because the bottom line is that human lives don't stop. The way in which we operate our processes are very clear, and we try to communicate that on a number of occasions, but I would like an opportunity again, as you acknowledged some of our resolutions tonight, we will address them at the appropriate time.
Okay, I guess, I think somebody's missing my point. My point is, when I read the summary and purpose of the Dream School Initiative, the Dream School program seeks to assist low-performance schools through a transformation process. What I'm saying, what it seems to me is that this initiative should be under the deputy superintendent of instruction. Why is it, why is Michelle the lead, is what I'm asking you?
Oh, okay.
But she is involved with the job.
I guess, perhaps I missed the perfect response, but I can tell you, Commissioner, the Dream Schools Initiative is not a one-person initiative. The school chiefs are very involved in doing this. Executive coaches lead quite a bit of the work. The deputy for teaching and learning is very involved in the work that is done. Perhaps Michelle's being the point person, maybe something that I believe you're asking. But the fact that she's a former principal, she's an academic at heart, and her job is really about building capacity of our staff when it comes to leadership development, and something she knows quite a bit about. So she leads it because much of this work really is about working with the principal in turning a school around, but she doesn't do it alone.
May I, I'd like to add one more point. The reason, one of the reasons why I am leading this initiative is because when Superintendent Bizard mentioned the Dream School, I reached out to a confidant and a friend and an educator who's renowned in New York City for helping to transform schools, Dr. Lou Smith. And he and I sat one evening and came up with a plan on how we can better support our principals and better support search schools, since I was the principal of a search school, and we absolutely transformed what occurred in that building and supported children. So I really requested that I be the one to help lead this initiative, and I felt that I could do both.
Thank you. Other questions for the superintendent?
Yeah.
Vice President White?
Yes. On the I Am Ready Young Adult Evening High School Program, the Dream Schools concept, let me just say, I think it is critically important that we begin to see how these things are coming together. That's why I made those comments about the 40 percent and the 37 percent, not to disparage the members of ASAR, but that this administration is taking a different approach. And I think people need to recognize that, because therein lies the hope. And on this I Am Ready Dream Schools and Evening School Program, I think we need to draw the connections between that programming and the administration it's offered. And sure, the members of ASAR are doing a yeoman's job, an excellent job, at getting our kids through school, but this administration has taken a different approach. And what was the result of that approach? We witnessed a summer school graduation that if you were there, your mind would have been blown. We had principals beaming with pride because of these wonderful students that were graduating. When I first proposed that idea, Dr. Kim Dice Fossett received the idea because two grandmothers said, "Why don't we celebrate the summer school graduation of our kids?" I passed that idea on to Kim Dice Fossett. She passed it on to Bill Kala, and at that ceremony, I think it was at SODA, we had about 40 or 50 graduates at the most. The auditorium was probably a quarter-filled. It wasn't packed. If anybody was there the other night at that summer school graduation, it would send chills down your back. It was standing room only, the kids, the principals, the teachers, everybody beaming with pride. It was a wonderful event. And here's my point, you cannot miss the connections between I Am Ready, the Evening School Program, and Dream Schools concept, because this is the result of the good work of this administration.
Other questions or comments for the superintendent?
Yeah.
Commissioner Campos, I'll come to you in a second, Senator.
For the Young Adult Evening High School Program and also the I Am Ready program, I'm just wondering what the capacity is for the amount of students this coming year, and also what you're anticipating. Is it going to increase? What are your plans?
With I Am Ready, Commissioner, the hope always decreases. But again, I mean, many people, I guess, will assume that the program was created to reduce suspension. We always hope that will happen. But the primary work for us is to increase the amount of seat time students had in front of a teacher. So the hope for I Am Ready is that the numbers will decrease this year. We always start with a zero slate and watch the numbers. With the Young Adult Evening Program, the capacity is much more. The hope last year was to start with about 100, when we had about 70. We were hoping for about 150 perhaps this year. Part of the challenge, of course, is identification, going to schools and convincing young people, at times they come to us directly, to come to a program that perhaps starts at 1:00 in the afternoon versus coming to school during the day. So it's about recruitment, it's about finding the right fit, because the program is not for ever. for every child. It really is for the kind of kid who are adult enough, who are looking for an alternative way of getting a high school diploma, another GED, but perhaps may have adult issues. This past year, we had a number of young mothers in the program. I believe the vast majority of the girls were young mothers. So one thing that I've talked to Tony Robinson about is the work now to find a qualified CBO to become a true partner to the work, where perhaps you can begin to leverage county services, other services in the school, because too often we lose those young individuals because they have to go to the county for Medicaid issues, et cetera. So the work for us is we can get them to us instead, even if they come once a week, so the young individuals don't have to go out and sit in line and miss a school day, but can be there. So we hope to double the numbers easily in the I Am Ready, but I'm sorry, the Young Adult Evening High School Program. And the other alternatives that we're looking for as well, for instance, right now, in my discussions with Mr. Robinson, the program mirrors a little bit too much of what happens during the day, but to really make it an alternative kinds of a program, if you remembered our organization chart, we had a box there for an alternative high school program lead. We've not filled that. I'm not sure if we will this year, but we're looking to create that structure where we can look at different ways of earning credit, different ways of getting children to completion, to credentialing. That is different from what you find during a school day. There are programs that we're looking at right now, technology-based, distance-learning programs, et cetera, that can easily embed within that program so students can complete at their own pace. Let me give you an example. Right now, if a child is missing, say, Global One, they will sit in a class X amount of hours and earn the credit. But imagine a classroom where you may have 10 or 15 students, or perhaps one history teacher, where you may have all 10 at different paces in global US economics, et cetera, where they're working at their own pace, completing modules, being facilitated by one or two teachers. This way, they can complete, move on, and perhaps even complete more than one course in a year, because many of the students failed the class before, so all they really have to demonstrate is the mastery of the standard. So there are different approaches to this that we're going to be toying with over the course of the next year to see, to begin to provide alternative ways for kids who may be disengaging from the program during the day, not because they don't have the academic prowess to do it, but perhaps because they may have a child, they may have two children, or they may have to work to support a family or even a parent. If you go to the adult program at Hart Street, during graduation, you hear about young people whose parents had cancer, they had to leave school to go to work to pay the bill and then come back and get a GED. Perhaps if we had this kind of program two years ago, three years ago, they would have gotten a high school diploma. Because as you know, a GED is counted as a dropout in New York statistic, and more and more colleges and the military are not accepting that as an entry.
And just as a follow-up, the only reason why I ask about the I Am Ready is because I know way in the beginning of the implementation of ISS that there was a capacity issue in terms of how many to hold, how many students to hold. So what's the capacity over there?
The ISS had capacity issues mostly at East. The I Am Ready didn't initially have a capacity issue. We were watching the numbers because at the beginning of the school year, the numbers were really small. And of course, then a spike around March, February, mostly March, excuse me. So the building has a capacity. The good thing is, although 950 students went through the program, they weren't at 950 at one time. I don't know what the building capacity is. Is Bob Hassler here?
It's okay.
We can get that for you, the actual building capacity. There was a time during the year, or even Jerome, Jerome Watts here, no, there was a time we actually got close to it, but it never got out of hand. But the fact is that we always hope to keep it low. The good thing is, next week, it's going to start at zero, and we'll try to keep it as close to that as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Loth, and then you had a question.
Yeah. I just want to make a comment and then two questions. I looked, I got to take a quick glance at all these, they look great, and I also got to test out the x-ray scanner yesterday, so I am extremely excited about that. I think that'll make a lot of difference, and I think a lot of students will be able to feel safer in their building. And the two questions I have are actually on I Am Ready. If a student is suspended long-term and they are suspended through June, my first question is, would they be taking their finals at I Am Ready? Like, if the student is suspended in their school and then they went over to I Am Ready, would they take their finals at I Am Ready?
Finals or finals?
Finals.
Finals tend to be school-based, but the idea is that a child's I Am Ready is supposed to continue with their academic instruction for the rest of the school year. But you know, I'm glad you bring up that point because it is something that we're beginning to talk about as well with Jerome Watts at the I Am Ready Program, to perhaps create in the coming year, if we can, if not the year after, a two-tier program, because we have students who go there for six days and have some more there for six months. So the requirements, I think, are very different in six days versus six months. So create programs that are longer term and those perhaps that are only for kids only there for a week, week and a half.
Now, and if they are suspended in, let's say, May, and their suspension's supposed to be six months, whatever the case may be, they return to I Am Ready in September?
Kristen, Kim, what's the practice? If a child is suspended, say, for 90 days, June 1st, do they come back to I Am Ready in the fall?
Okay. So the idea is to try to give students as much as possible a fresh start when school opens in the fall, unless there are, again, extenuating circumstances that will provide some safety issues back at the homeschool.
Okay. And my last question is, if a student is sent to I Am Ready and they stop going, are they considered a dropout?
No, dropout has a specific definition. I'm not sure if you're asking if a child is given 90 days at I Am Ready, for instance, and goes for 10 days and not come back.
Well, I mean, and then I'm saying, like, if they stopped going and, let's say, for a month or so, but they've been given a certain amount of time, then they decide, okay, I'm going to return to school, whatever, will they be re-estated at I Am Ready or will they have to go through reentry and go back to their homeschool?
Ask the question again.
It was...
You want to try the...
Hello?
Okay.
If a student is suspended and sent to I Am Ready, but they don't show up to I Am Ready and they haven't, and they're given a certain amount of time to come to I Am Ready, but they don't, I was asking if they're considered a dropout? And then I said, well, if they don't go, but they want to reenter into school, would they be sent back to I Am Ready or back to their homeschool?
I get your question now. The first part of your question is, no, they're a dropout unless they never return to school. Because again, dropout has a very specific definition in the accountabilities in New York State. I think what your second question says, if a child gets 30 days at I Am Ready and goes one day and stops coming, when they reappear, do they have to serve the rest of the time of the I Am Ready? It's not like jail, no, they don't. Again, my attorneys, you can correct, Kristen?
Yeah.
Use the microphone? Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
If a student's assigned to the I Am Ready Program for 30 days and they do not show up at the I Am Ready Program for all of those 30 days, they still are to return to school, their regular program, on day 31.
Okay.
Does that help though?
But no follow-up is instituted with that? If they've not attended I Am Ready, but they go back to their homeschool?
It's... Are you asking, we do not extend the penalty.
Yes.
They're counted illegally absent from school. So the, all of the mechanisms that we have in place for students who are illegally absent go into effect during that time that they are supposed to be attending I Am Ready.
Okay.
I believe it's part of the legislation, safe, it's New York State regulation, this is not something we've decided. In other words, you could not double jeopardy to a student because they didn't come to the I Am Ready. There's no law requiring them to attend the I Am Ready Program. There's a law requiring them to go to school, you know, if they are a specific age. But bottom line is, we don't have the power to do that. But the fact is that if a child, if you listen to my report, 35% have never showed up on average throughout the school year. That is a problem for us because it means they didn't get the intervention, the support to stop the behavior perhaps a second time. So it is an issue that we have to address moving forward, because again, if they didn't show up at all, whatever issues happened at the school was not exactly. That's our problem, yes.
Okay, thank you. I am very sorry, Mr. President, but this is a good dialogue. I know Rick Crane out in Arondecoy, and I've had this experience as a lawyer representing students who are suspended.
Jeff?
Jeff Crane, I'm sorry, thank you, sorry about that. I've had this experience, what they do, and you correct me if this would not apply here, but they, let's say, for example, suspend a student for 90 days or six months, and as an option at the suspension hearing, they say, okay, listen, if you do this program, which we can't force you to do, if you do this program, we'll cut your suspension to 30 days. If the student doesn't do the program, they go to the 90 days. It sounds to me like, and you correct me if wrong, it sounds to me like a student could say, "I got a suspension of 30 days and I'm going to go in the I Am Ready Program," blow it off, 29 days, and then go back to school. Is that right?
Right now, yes.
That's not going to work.
Then they would have no intervention.
So my, if that's, and I'm underlining the operative phrase, if that is true...
Yeah.
No, I didn't say it's a waste of time, but what I did say is, what I do think is we ought to reconsider that approach, because again, Jeff Crane, and my experience as attorney representing these kids is, they give them an option, and the option is a shorter time in this program, and if you don't do that, then you're going to do full time.
But Commissioner, if they don't show up for the full program either, they still go back to school after the...
But listen, the student would be looking at 90 days suspension as opposed to 30 days.
But I think these are the same situations that we face as well. If they don't show up, if they choose to not do the shorter time and still decide to skip for 89 days or 90, they still go back to school without any kind of intervention?
Well, no, I understand that, but I'm saying, at the very least, the student wouldn't be, get the benefit of saying, okay, I'm going to chill, hang out, I want to be back in school anyway, so I'm going to come back after 29 days.
Yeah.
You know, that...
Except that, I agree, except that actually, in some cases, I'm sorry, in some cases in I Am Ready, I actually have, and Jerome will tell you this, students who actually go there and don't want to go back.
Don't want to go back to I Am Ready.
To the day school.
They don't want to go back.
To the day school.
My...
They prefer the I Am Ready Program in some cases. So it's not, it may not be a carrot, not a whistle, you're going to get 30 days. It will work for some kids, not for all kids.
Have we tried that approach where they, we say?
Yes.
We've instituted variation on Superintendent Crane's, how he has it structured. We structured something called Contracts of Conduct. So we would go to the long-term suspension hearing, and our hearing officer would engage in a dialogue with the family and the building to discuss what kinds of guidelines and frameworks the child and the family would agree to, whether it be community service, intervention, counseling, and we would offer parents the opportunity to enter into those kinds of agreements. We have those agreements available, and our hearing officer, Derek Banks, uses those when it's appropriate. We've had very mixed success with those agreements in terms of parents accepting the terms that the school and Mr. Banks try to outline. So, but we continue to work on that.
I'd be interested to know what the actual numbers of success are, I mean, if we could, because I think that if we examine whether we are really motivating our kids into remediation and support, or whether we're just giving them the option that they get to choose to do their time or not. I'm concerned that many kids may say, "I'll just do my time and then go back to school." And then you've got all those frustrated principals back there that have to deal with them because the kid hasn't done anything.
Except that, you know, we don't, Commissioner, I mean, I don't, one thing I want to caution us in using is the word "time," because the idea here is to continue the academic program and perhaps not them seeing it as it doing time, for instance.
But I'm telling you, that's what a lot of kids look at it. That's just the reality of it. I don't, I don't think that's how it should be, but I think that's how many kids look at it.
But I think that Jerome, who I know pretty well, has created such an atmosphere over at I Am Ready that it really is not a, I mean, they are away from their, away from their friends, but I don't think that once they get there and get into the program, just from the students I've talked to that have been there, some of them were at the academic showcase, saw it as, actually, many of them flourished there because they got what they needed in terms of attention, support, connection to services. So I Am Ready is a perfect alternative for students who may need that structure. And I wish we had a school that was similar to I Am Ready, because those students actually benefit from being away from that traditional school structure.
Well...
Last question, Mr. Loth, before I move to standing committee reports.
Well, you know, as we were talking about with the attendance, if a student gets suspended and doesn't show up for the program, my question is, do we have something like, I know, when I go to school, if I don't show up that day or for two days, three days, the teacher or somebody in the attendance office calls my house eventually, and then eventually, based on the scenarios or what's going on in my life, they might send out somebody to come check up on me, to make sure I'm okay and my family's okay, whatever the scenario may be. Do we...
Gladys?
It's still an official school day, and students are expected to show up to school. So we're working, we have coordinators of attendance that work by zone, and there's a coordinator of attendance that works in the northwest zone that's working very specifically with the I Am Ready Program. So we're double-checking to make sure their attendance and following up with them if they're not, if they're not attending school. And that's when the services start to kick in, in terms of interventions, when they return back to school.
Okay, last question, Vice President White, very last, last question.
I was at a meeting just the other day, and somebody said, and correct me, Gladys, if this is wrong, that I Am Ready does not monitor the attendance themselves, that the attendance of a student is monitored at his homeschool rather than I Am Ready. Is that, is that accurate?
No, that's not true.
Do they actually input the attendance at I Am Ready?
Commissioner, I think what you're saying is that what you may have heard was that the I Am Ready Program didn't get chance re-access last year. They have it now.
They have it now?
They have it now. So they were relying on the day school to input the data for them.
Okay, that's not the case.
They were keeping the attendance and giving it to the day school, but now they have access to chance re-access.
Thank you.
Yes.
We looked through all that as we were putting together the procedures and protocols for the attendance policies, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll now move on to board, Mr. Wright. We'll now move on to board, standing committee reports. I always start with our student report, so I'm going to start with Mr. Loth.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I took a two-month vacation. Anyway, I have to say again, I really liked the scanner. I got to test it out yesterday. They definitely went in all my stuff. So that worked out well. I have to give kudos to the graduation that I attended on Tuesday. The message is basically, it doesn't matter when or where or time or the day in your life, as long as you get there and you receive your degree, I think that says a lot more than the paper itself. So I was very proud to attend that and see some of my fellow classmates walk the stage, as well as SLC was able to give some input into the Safe Schools Grant along with other youth organizations, Youth as Resources, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, Youth Voice on Vision, and SWAT, where these young people are coming together to try to come up with a plan and better ideas of how we should use our Safe Schools Grant. These committees will be meeting again. SLC Monday is doing Operation Backpack over at 30 Hart Street, that's at 2:30. We are accepting donations of backpacks and school supplies from Channel 8 to be distributed out to our schools. The next SLC meeting is September 23rd at 3:30 PM. I'm extremely excited to kick off this school year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Student Rep. Commissioner Powell on the Finance Committee?
Yes, before I start my official Finance Committee report, I want to speak to the principals and the audience to say that for those comments of your representative, ASAR President Vicky Govea, that were directed to me or intended for me personally, I want to tell you that I accept that rebuke. I've asked myself, you know, why did I say what I said at the special meeting? Why didn't I just keep my mouth shut and vote as I chose to vote without sharing the reasons why? And I can't give you a good reason. If the real question is that why did the board wait so long, as you all know, I can't speak for the whole board, but I could certainly express to you individually, if you ask or through your ASAR president, what my motivations were, and I'd be happy to sit with President Govea about that. So again, I accept the rebuke, I own it, and I deserve it. Finance Committee met on Thursday, August 20th. I was not present, but I am still giving the report. The Finance Committee first and foremost approved the Student Activity Funds Report. I ask at this point if I might move that the board accept that report.
Is a motion to accept the Student Activities Funds Report that you are receiving in your packet, is it was moved by Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion around the Student Activities Funds Report? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Okay. See, we also have Resolutions 154 through 169. 164 and 165 are procurement. 154 through 57 and 159 and 161 are educational facilities, and 167 is student health services. Three of these resolutions were amended, had suggested amendments through the finance committee. Now, so they were approved through the finance committee with suggested amendments. You'll find at the dais, three plus a cover page, lilac-colored pages, that someone would need to advance a resolution to amend in order for these, in order for the finance committee recommendations to match what we're actually voting on. I don't find them to be profound amendments, on the one hand, but on the other hand, there's, the words added reflect requirement that they not exceed budgeted amounts, which is implied in any event. So, I think that we'll be in fine shape whether their amendments carry the day or not.
I actually was at that meeting, and you're the better parliamentarian than I am, Commissioner Powell, but couldn't we just vote down 158 and vote in favor of 158A rather than...
Well, a motion to substitute would be the same as a motion to amend.
Right. When we get to those resolutions, when we get into the discussion of finance resolutions, the two commissioners that were at the finance committee meeting may make a motion to substitute the current resolutions that are there for the lilac copies, if the board has no problem with it.
As I say, I'm not convinced that the added language is necessary, but it, and in fact, might set a difficult precedent, because in fact, it's always implied that the expenditures are within budget. So, it actually might suggest a difficult precedent, but as I say, in and of themselves, they'd be fine either way.
Okay.
I believe that covers my finance committee report.
And no financial reports, is it?
Right. And the next finance committee is September 17th at 5:30.
Thank you. Next, we will move to the, I'm sorry, the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee, Vice President White.
Also known as ESA.
ESA.
The Excellence Student Achievement Committee had its August 17th, 2009, meeting rescheduled to September the 10th, 2009 at 5:30. At that meeting, we will be discussing the, we'll have an introduction to the Response to Intervention program. I want to thank Marilyn Patterson-Grant for her patience. We've had this presentation put off at least twice. Also, ESA will begin the board's dialogue on the important topic of class size. We will ask the administration to discuss and answer questions regarding specific student-teacher ratios in our high schools, and whether there is any recognizable pattern in those ratios among our high schools. I want to thank Jackie Morgan and Shanay Lee in advance for their work on this issue. This concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President White. Commissioner Elliott, in the policy committee?
Policy committee meeting was canceled for the month of August, and we will reschedule a meeting sometime in September. Please check the board website for that date. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Commissioner Camples, in the Community and Governmental Relations Committee?
CIGR did not meet this month, but we do have a couple of things that are moving forward. One is the community conversations. We'll be having one, I just found out, it'll be September 29th at East High School, where it'll be similar to City Hall on the road, where we'll have different departments that can be able to interact with the parents so that they can be able to ask questions, 'cause sometimes it's very difficult to navigate the system, so we're trying to make it easier for our parents. And also, the student wellness policy, working with administration to put together a core group to be able to work on this in terms of food standards. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Camples. Commissioner Brennan, in the Board Governance Committee?
Governance Committee met as a committee of the hall last month, and will be meeting again on the 22nd of September. It's probably not at liberty to go into what we discussed.
Absolutely. Thank you. Brief president's report. I had the opportunity to attend the, Commissioner White also attended the appreciation event for the budget staff. I wanna thank the budget staff again for delivering the 2009, 2010 budget. I can only imagine what it's like to work in the budget office when you got the superintendent, department heads, and everybody else telling you where to plug numbers and what to do. So, I wanna thank them for their hard work, and I hope that it wasn't too crazy for them during this 2009, 2010 year. They truly are the worker bees of this district, and wanna thank them for their service this year and their continued service. It was mentioned several times, I had the opportunity to attend, along with the superintendent, Vice President White, and Commissioner Elliott, the August graduation. For those of you that did not know, we graduated 142 students this past summer. I think it's probably one of the biggest.
[applause]
So, I mean, it's amazing and a testament to all the hard work of the students, the parents, the principals, the teachers, in the community, and I was just overwhelmed by the energy that was at the Hockstein School of Music, and I look forward to our graduation rate being increased and by us providing support to these type of students. Lastly, I'll say, and it's, you know, once I got, someone stopped me and said, why are you celebrating summer graduates? I almost bit their head off with the simple fact that, you know, people sometimes assume that because they're graduating during the summer, they're lazy, but you don't know the life situations that sometime can intervene in a person's life. So, I would say to those people that are critical of us celebrating our students in the summer, that they look in the mirror and maybe talk to the students that graduated in August to figure out what their individual situations were. So, congratulations to them. We are very proud of them. Last, the district launched a new website this week. The new site is designed to be much more user-friendly, easier to navigate, and more useful for the schools, for visitors seeking information about the district. And also, you should know that the Order of Business and Index of Resolutions for this month's business meeting are posted on the district's website and on the board's page. And also, going forward, we will use the calendar, along with our normal media communications, to advertise meetings and relevant materials. So, please give your feedback on the site. It's an effort to be transparent. I always say, I really don't, it really doesn't do us any good to not give folks information. It actually makes it easier for us, and we hope that it will make it easier for the public with this website. But again, it's new, so please give us your feedback. We wanna know how we can continuously improve our communications with the public. That concludes my report, and we will now move into the considerations of resolutions. The first crop of resolutions are related to human capital initiatives, meaning that they are related to specific individuals. Many of these resolutions have been discussed in study session. Any resolutions related to a particular individual would have to be discussed in executive session unless they are general in nature. Our student rep cast an advisory vote on all resolutions with the exception of the Human Capital Initiatives resolutions. So, I will now entertain a motion for discussion to vote on Resolutions 93 through 153. May I have a motion?
Sure, move.
Second.
Moved by Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussion around Resolutions 93 through 153.
President Evans?
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
Question in reference to the probationary, the principals who have been assigned as a result of their probationary period ending. Why is there a difference in the salaries for these principals whose probationary period ended August 2nd? What criterion is used to determine differences in salaries?
Mr. Superintendent, would you like Ms. Hancock?
Dr. Hancock?
Dr. Hancock?
Yes, that is dependent on the years of experience in the system. Years of experience.
I don't understand what that means.
That means that you're asking about existing principals or when principals are appointed.
Well, this says that their probationary period ended. I don't know...
Their probationary period ended, they have...
Hold up, hold up. All the information I have is here, so you need to help me to understand what I don't know, so that that can help me to be satisfied with your response about the difference in the salaries. And I don't know what you mean when you say they have, in other words, let me try to help you. These people did not just come from somewhere else, they've been with us. Is that what you're trying to say to me?
Yes, that's what probationary means, so...
No, 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 that, I guess what I was thinking...
They've been in the system.
No, yeah, that's what I didn't understand.
Okay, that's what you didn't understand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't know they came out of, you know, somewhere else and came to the district, is what I'm saying to you.
No, they have been in the system, and dependent on the number of years they have served in our system, you will see a differentiation in the salaries.
Okay, you may as well stay there. Reference to...
Okay.
I didn't mean that. But here's a concern that I have. How, I'm looking at the RTA Board Resolution Review, and we have some dates of that termination or resignation/retirement, but then we say employee submitted resignation letter after July board resolution deadline. How do, how does HCI get letters of resignations after the end date? I don't understand. If they have decided to retire, say, July 1, and we don't get a letter of resignation to July 23, what's in that process that preventing that letter of resignation to come prior to the end date?
The employee really has the option and the right, through contractual language, to let us know when they want to retire. We cannot control that. So, regardless of, when we say the July, you might say that, for example, July, at the end of July, you're asking for resignations. It might come, the resignation, the person might know that they want to resign sooner, but they might not send us the letter to two to three weeks. We cannot align when people resign with the board, the board's due dates. That's what that means.
Well, I guess I wasn't even thinking at this point of when it gets to the board, but just the fact, if an employee says that they're gonna resign, they have it in their mind, they're gonna resign July 1, right? Shouldn't they contact...
It's not that the, this, when we say July 1 on this, we are referring to your date. We're not referring to...
My dates?
We're referring to the dates, internal dates that we have to submit information to get it to the board. That is what that is referring to. It is not referring to what a person is saying or thinking in terms of when they want to retire. We are saying to you that internally, we have a date, that we are trying to make sure we get information to you. Oftentimes, what happens, employees give us information after our aligned dates.
I'm totally confused, but that's okay. Don't worry about it. You don't have to respond anymore. I'm voting no anyway, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, any other questions or comments around the resolutions?
Yes, I do have more.
On 93 through 153? Okay, Commissioner Elliott?
How many of the teachers in Resolutions 109 are African-American, and particularly, how many of those teachers who have been granted tenure are African-American men? I guess you should've stayed up there.
Yeah, Dr. Hancock, do you have that kind of information off the top of your head, though?
I do not have that information with me, but I can certainly provide it at a later date and time.
We don't have any guesstimate of what that is?
I...
You'd be guessing by the names, I guess.
We talk about this all the time. You know we're gonna ask about.
We talk about it all the time.
Any guesstimate? Is it, do we have African-Americans who are tenured, and do you know if we have that are African-American men?
Commissioner, if you look at the resolution, I'm sure the good doctor here will be guessing by looking at names to assume who these individuals are. We have...
I didn't ask her to look by names, but somehow, we have data that suggests...
I do have data.
We have the information.
But I do not, and I brought it to the last meeting because I thought it was going to be asked in July. I did not bring it to this meeting, so what I will do is provide that information to the board.
I believe that was a setup, Commissioner Superintendent.
No, it wasn't a setup, Commissioner.
So that you didn't ask the question.
Commissioner, we're not, we're not that good.
I caught that.
No, I did. I brought it to the last, because I did assume you, and no one asked it, so I have it.
You know I'm gonna ask those questions.
I know you are, Commissioner Elliott, and I would be more than happy to provide you with that information, because we do have it downstairs.
All right. And then, in reference to Resolution 114, I just wanna state, and this is not for you, this really is not specific to you, Hancock.
Okay, all right.
But in reference to Resolution 114, I really am disappointed that in this, in this case of a teacher who's done an outstanding job in terms of one of our programs, one of our schools, where we had him to be terminated and not given tenure because of, and I'm trying to not get into specifics, because of someone else's decision. And it would seem to me, in cases like this, when we know we've got good people, and we know that the person who did the termination is a bad person, we know that, that in my mind, this is an opportunity for us to make it right, and we did not make it right, Mr. Superintendent. And so, the other part of that is that even with the program, the program got shut down. Here's an opportunity for young people to explore this kind of career, culinary arts, and to have this program shut down when there's a medium salary in this opportunity, a $44,000 a year, to allow one person to make a decision autonomously without considering the impact that these kinds of decisions would have throughout the district and the impact that it can have in our community, says to me that the decisions that we have made, these are unsound business practices. And I would say, in the future, that I would hope that when these decisions are made in isolation by principals, that we would take into consideration the impact they would have, not only for that school, but the impact that they will have for the district wide, because to have this program to shut down out of ego, and that's what it is, that's exactly what it is, 'cause the program was going, running very, very well. Not only that, but we also have community partners that was involved with this. We also have people who invested in terms of facilities and what have you, and to have this program to be shut down by a decision by one person just seems to me to be not the best kind of practices that the district should undergo. And I really do point the finger, because there's an opportunity, Mr. Superintendent, for you to have overridden this, and you did not. That's just my statement. And now I got a statement on...
Thank you.
No, you don't need to respond. You don't need to respond. That's my statement.
All right.
Now, Resolution 117. In reference, why are we paying a teacher $33 an hour to operate AV equipment? Couldn't we get an AV person with much less?
Can you see that?
We paying $33 an hour?
What number is that, Commissioner?
117.
That's a resignation, I think.
It's a resignation, Commissioner.
No, no. Well, that's my, I got the wrong...
It's the old one, remember?
Okay, we got the wrong packet. Let me just go back and read it.
Resolution 118.
Okay, they're saying it's Resolution 118.
Dr. Holloway, would you like to address, I'm sure it's much more to this...
I'm trying $33 to hire, to have somebody to operate AV equipment.
I'm sure it's much more to it than this.
Your question, your question was, why is this person being paid $33?
Why are we paying $33 to hire, to have somebody to operate AV equipment?
This particular person is a teacher, and when a person, when a teacher does this kind of work, that's the standard amount of money that they're paid per hour for their work.
Did the teacher have to do that kind of work? Couldn't we get someone else to do it for less?
Commissioner, I'm sure, Commissioner, Commissioner, I'm sure, again, I'm sure...
In times of financial constraint...
Commissioner, if I may, Commissioner?
We have to look at how we spend in our resources.
Commissioner, I'm sure there's a lot more to this resolution than perhaps what is written here.
There is, and I'll get more information.
You all, you need to provide it for us.
I will provide that for you.
And then, in reference to resolutions, and I'm gonna go by my old packet, but I think it's 131 to 149, we still are receiving these resolutions after the fact.
Ms. Hancock, if you wanna come forward, 'cause I think this, I brought this up in a study session, and you provided the explanation.
Oh, okay. 130.
You may have a different number, Ms. Hancock.
139. Page 37.
Was it 132?
Yeah, I think...
131.
Page 17.
In 131, Commissioner, the resolution was presented in July on time. This was amended to add staff. It is not a new resolution. Same thing for 132, same thing for 133, for 134. Same thing for 132, uh, same thing for 133, for 134, for 135, I believe all of them, Commissioner. If you look, uh, bold and underline amended to add staff. This is, this is what happens unfortunately, we have actual teachers' names on these because if one person resigns and one, we add a new person or add one person to the, to the work, the whole resolution has to be presented again. So this is not new resolutions, they were presented on time.
Right.
And I just have some amendments to make, uh, when we get to that point.
Okay.
Asked for.
Well, we're, we're, there's a motion on the, um, there's a motion on the fourth of Resolutions 93 through 153. Any other, um, uh, questions or general comments around 93 through 153? You said you-
I, I want, when I vote, I wanna separate out, um, 114 so that we could make the resolution.
So you can make that, you can make that, um, that, that proposed amendment now if you would like. 114, you would like to make it 114 A and B?
Correct.
Oh, I'll second that.
Yeah, I gotta make sure that it's, can I look at yours?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Let me just make sure that it is the 114.
There's a third one.
Yeah, it might be A, B, C.
So it'll be 114, A, B, and C?
114?
Yep.
Yes.
A, B, and C?
I don't see A, B, C.
No, no, that's what the amendment would be.
A, 114, A, 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 B.
Okay. And also on, um, Resolution 152 that I had written down, but let me just-
Well, we're 93 through 153, so.
We're just doing-
No, no, that's a part of it, isn't it?
Yeah, 193 through 153.
Yeah, 152, right?
Yep.
Is it 152 or 153?
Yeah, that's what I have to check to make sure. It's 153 at this point.
Okay.
So I'd like to have 153, A, B, C.
There's, there's five names there.
So, but for the first three?
For the one, the one, I'm gonna, I'm only gonna vote for the one with effective date of September 5. I'm voting no on the other ones.
So are you looking for A to be the first three?
Or the-
B to be the fourth and C to be the fifth? That would accomplish what you're asking.
The first, the first three names and the last name can be A. That can't just be A too, that could be A.
Okay. Madam Clerk, have you captured? Let me just, let me just, let me just do this for, for sake of, um, for sake of ease. Resolution 153, um, Resolution 153, there are, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 names. I will make that Resolution 153, A, B, C, D, and E. Resolution number 114, Resolution number 114 will be A, B, C. Have we gotten that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. So we will now vote on Resolutions 93 through 153. Resolutions 93 through 153, um, any other, um? Yes, Madam Clerk?
We will have to separate, uh, 114, 114, 114A, 114B.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yep.
Not A, B, and C.
Yeah, 114A, 114B, 114C, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and now, and we'll vote on those separately.
Do we actually need a, a motion to amend?
And that's a motion by, that's a motion, uh, that by Commissioner, um, Elliott, it was seconded by Commissioner Brennan to amend.
Right.
Um, all those in favor of, uh, amending?
Yep.
Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. So again, we have 114A, B, and C, and 153, A, B, C, D, and E. And we'll vote on 114 and 153, um-
Wait a minute.
President Evans, I think there's still-
That's not current. It should be 114, 114A, and 114B. So there's three resolutions, first being 114, second 114A, and the third will be-
What would be in 114? Nothing left.
The first sign is teacher, uh, N C.
Okay. That's 114.
Yeah.
Okay.
The second name would be B and then C. Accordingly, okay.
So that's gonna be, oh, that's gonna be C.
Okay.
There are three, three names, three markers.
Madam Clerk, are you saying there's gotta be a 114 to have a 114A?
Gotcha. And the subsequent items would be B and C?
No, it would be A and B.
A and B, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay, so that's fine, so 114, and then 114A, 114B. Okay. And 153? 153A, 153B, 153C, and 153D?
No. No.
For, uh, Resolution 153, we'll have the first three employees as 153. The fourth employee will be 153A, and the fifth employee will be 153B.
Okay. Um, Commissioner, uh, Elliott, you made the, um, motion, Commissioner Brennan, you seconded it. Are you two, are you two fine with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I am.
All right. So, and we'll vote on those two, um, separately. So I'll entertain a motion for Resolutions 90, uh, well, I'll, I'll call the vote on Resolutions 93 through 1, um, 1, 153 with the exception of, uh, 114 and 153, which I will do separately. So, um, all those in favor of Resolutions 93 through 150, 152, would the, please say, um, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
93, 95, 96, 100, 101, 103, 105. Are we voting the 1, can I say 114B?
Um, no, we're gonna get to that separately.
Okay. 117, 130 through 149. 151. Now, these are, let me just say, these are my numbers based on the previous-
You're gonna get them wrong.
You know, so.
Where's Commissioner Elliott's new packet?
No, I have it, but I, when I, I'm, when I work from my-
All right. Well, if you can just get with the clerk afterwards and, and she can capture those notes, please?
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Um, and I abstain on 108. Family member. Um, now we will vote on Resolution number 114, Resolution number 114, and then, may-
A and B.
All those in favor, first I'm gonna do 114, then I'll do 114A, and then 114B. Um, all those in favor of Resolution 114, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it? Um, all those in favor of Resolution 114A, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mr. President, I vote no.
You want one, no?
114A, yep.
Okay. And Commissioner Elliott, 114A?
Um, yes, that's, yes, yes.
You vote no?
No, I vote-
114A is the portion of Resolution for Vocational Education.
Ricky told me?
Yeah.
The first name, the second-
Yes, yes, I vote no on that one.
Okay. Okay. And I, and I vote no on 114A, but the ayes have it. All those in-
It's a double.
We have six, we have six commissioners, 3-3 is rejected.
Okay.
What is rejected?
Who voted no for 114?
You won your point, Cynthia.
Um-
All right. 114A is a, is, so what do we s-
Vocational Education.
Yeah. I'm looking at the secondary academic, that's-
That's 114.
That's 114.
Okay, so we're voting on vocational education.
114A.
So that's, oh, 114A?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Can we do a roll call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, my, my, my vote is no on 114A.
Right.
So we're saying it's a deadlock?
No, it fell, the resolution fell, not a majority.
We need four votes to pass.
Right. We need majority. So it didn't pass. So it's three, it was 3-3.
It, it doesn't, the resolution doesn't pass. 114A doesn't pass. Well, now I'm 114B. All those in favor of Resolution 114B, please say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no. Um, 114B passes. Um, we'll now move to 153. And then we'll vote on 153 first, and then the last two names are A and B.
Oh, that's 114. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
So we're, we're on Resolution 153?
Can I do this?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Um, all those in favor of Resolution 153, please say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, no, I vote no on 153.
Okay. The ayes have it? And just let me stop for a second because there were some principal, there were some principals that were appointed.
Yes, they're leaving. Mr. Principals, don't, don't leave yet. Thank you, thank you. Uh, I guess it might, it might be late, um, I'm sorry for, for, for interjecting. Is Tracy Del Grego here, Tracy? Just wave. Tracy is the new principal of School 34, came from School Number 845, was an academy, academy director for the Dream Schools. Thank you for taking on this challenge. Is, uh, Sherri Armstrong here? Sherri, stand up. Met Sherri, first I met her, said she's a powerful woman. Uh, taking over School 44, thank you. Came from the Office of Accountability Research and Research Specialist. Thank you for taking on this challenge. Is, uh, Steven Schaefer? Steven? Okay, missing one. Jay Piper? Jay, did he leave as well? I think we lost Jay, but I really wanna give him, uh, kudos. Jay's my neighbor. Walk the dogs together every morning, so. Jay came from the, um, the bilingual office, ELL office, Director of ESAL, taking on School 15. Congratulations, folks. You've taken on the toughest job in urban education.
Um, do you wanna, Rhonda Neal?
Or this, uh, if I can just perhaps do Clinton, even though it's, aye, two more? Clinton Bell? Yes? Although Clinton is, uh, is interacting for School 22, uh, is, uh, former principal, Tohanni Pantoja, made sure that she was able to select her replacement at School 22. Congratulations. But it finally happened. What about missing? That's it, right? I think I have everybody. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
One more up there?
No, I think that's all the principals we have.
Did we miss every, all the principals?
Nope, 57. It says, yeah.
Let me, let me also, is, uh, is Rhonda Neal here?
Yes.
Rhonda Neal, congratulations. Carla, Carla Roberts, is Carla Roberts here? Congratulations. Over at School 20, um, that's one of my schools, so I love visiting School 20. School 54, Brenda Santana, is she here? Um, and is, um, and, and what about, I don't know if Enya De Jesus showed up? Um, Michael Carney? Latricia Fuller?
Yeah, the, the acting, Latricia, welcome to Central Office.
Executive, executive director of mathematics. Um, and then Tihani, who is the acting executive director of English Language Learners at Central Office. Is Tihani here, did she come?
Tihani? Tihani still has to get to the bilingual council, but you'll be fine, I'm sure.
Jaclyn McClainy? Is Ms. McClainy here? And then lastly, and we mentioned Clinton Bell, so congratulations to all of you in your new leadership positions, best of luck. We'll now move on to, um, Resolutions 153. Resolution 153, we wrote on Resolution 153A and Resolution 153 separately. And I'll hold so folks that are leaving can have the opportunity to leave.
Yeah, lock the doors.
I think everyone in the, in the office works, um, for the superintendent. Resol- all those in favor of Resolutions 153, um, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed?
No.
One no? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now vote on Resolutions 153A. All those in favor of Resolution 153A, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. And lastly, we will vote on Resolution 153B. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
One no, the ayes have it. That will conclude our Human Resources Resolutions. We will now move to Educational Facilities, um, Resolutions are 154 through 161. Um, and I would just ask Commissioner, um, Elliott and Vice President White, if you can explain what took place to, um, to facilitate the purple sheets that, that we have in front of us, the amendments, just so we can get our understanding of them.
Yeah, President Evans, when we were presented the, um, Resolutions in the Finance Committee, a number of those resolutions did not have dollar amounts on those resolutions. They had TBD, to be determined. I, I'm always hesitant about, um, those kinds of resolutions and want it to be clear that, at least for me, if I'm gonna vote on a resolution, that, uh, there are some, um, constrictions, some parameters in terms of the amount of money that can be spent. So, what would've made me comfortable to vote in support of those resolutions were to have the language in the resolution that says a do not exceed amount, or a budgeted amount, I think is one that we put in there so that, um, from the Board's perspective, we've done our due diligence to ensure the, um, financial responsibility of, um, the school district.
Okay. And I actually should've asked for a motion to, um, amend Resolutions 158, uh, 158, 162. Actually, substitution.
Could I, could I ask first?
162. Commissioner Powell?
I suggest first that we just isolate 158 and, uh, and work on the Resolutions 154 through 161. Sans 158. So we can isolate that.
Mm-hmm. Why, why is it, what are you suggesting?
Because that makes it a lot less confusing when you, when someone does move to either substitute or amend.
Yeah, because the series of resolutions that we're talking about are 154 to 161, and what Commissioner Powell's recommending is we just extract out for the time being 158. The other ones that you're talking about fall in the next set of resolutions.
Okay, all right.
See what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, so let's start with Resolutions, um, 154 through 1-
57?
61, 161.
Less.
Less 158. Less Resolution 158. Um, so may I have a motion to approve Resolutions 154 through 161 with the exception of Resolution 158? Moved by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. Questions, questions around Resolutions 154 through 161, except for 158?
Yeah, President Evans, I just want to, um, be clear that, again, I, I point out that I worked on the resolutions of the-
Can we shut that door, please?
The resolutions of the, um, Board Packet that we received, uh, last, last week. So my numbers may be off, and I will check with the clerk to make sure that they correspond with the latest packet.
Okay, thank you. 154 through 161 with the exception of 158. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
One, I believe is 159. It's 159 on my paper.
Which company?
Mr. President, this is architecture.
That's 160. Architecture PC?
Let me just...
If it's 160, Commissioner, will you look at it?
That I have a... Yeah, it's 160. I have to stain from this because this is part of my organization.
Okay. Thank you. So there's a substitution on 160. Now, may I have a motion to substitute Resolution Number 158 with the proposed 158A?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Discussion around Resolution 158A. Commissioner Powell?
Well, I can understand the actions taken with the other two resolutions. This particular resolution already had a set dollar amount. I consider the language completely extraneous and will vote no. And recommend others vote no as well.
And recommend... What was your recommendation, Commissioner Powell?
I consider the language in this particular resolution, not so much the other two, but in this particular resolution, to be extraneous because the dollar amount already exists. A dollar limit already existed in the original. I would recommend a vote of no to the substitution.
Unless that resolution came... That dollar amount came after the fact.
No, I'm looking right at it. The original has a dollar amount.
Yeah.
It may not have been the case at the time of the Finance Committee, but it does now.
Yeah, and let me just say, I'm just a little off because the numbers are off too. So if I sort of am scrambling, forgive me. Yeah, I think they were off during the Finance Committee, and so I have no problem with that if the number is...
Your number is there now.
Yeah.
Okay. So it has $213,215 performed through this agreement on Resolution 158. Any other questions around... Any other...
Oh, you know...
Any other comments around the substitution of 158A?
Yeah, you know what? Now, because I'm taking a look at it now, the reason for the... That the total expenditures for this year only is because this was a $100,000 increase over the do not exceed amount that we had in previously. And this was due to some work that was done... There was a fire or something, I believe. Deputy Superintendent of Administration indicates to us that there was some damage to a school, something to that effect, and it cost about $100,000. So that's why we have the language in it for this year only, for that amount. Typically, we're not going to be spending $213,000 on an annual basis. So that's why we put that clause in there. And I don't see the superintendent, Mr. Superintendent of Administration to support that. But that is... The minutes will show that from the Finance Committee.
President, response. The issue here is, this is a one-year contract for this year only. That language, for this year only, is completely redundant because it's a one-year contract.
Yeah, but we've had these contracts to come before the Finance Committee in the past.
I...
They come year to year. And so... But the... They come year to year, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we have this agreement that we renew these contracts year to year, even though we may... And we may have a five-year agreement with renewal for them year to year.
I understand how it would have gotten through Finance Committee with this language added because it's the expedient way to get a resolution moving and allow it to be presented to the board a week later. I just can't express myself more clearly to my colleagues that, in this particular instance, and I'm not talking about the other two, this is a waste of time.
Okay. Any other comments on this before we vote on it?
I would just say, the only... The reason why I'm going to vote no is because in the whereas part, it talks about the unanticipated expenses. So I feel like it already summarizes what's there, and that with the what this year only, it shows based on the fire at School Without Walls that it was more money. So I think it would be that it's already there and explained.
Vice President White, anything you want to add, you were at this meeting?
No, except... And I don't know if this is going to help anybody in their determination, but the administration was more than willing to make these changes, and they authored them themselves. I mean, after the dialogue, they were more than agreeable to do this. Your suggestion is they were willing to do it because they wanted to get these resolutions before the full board. I didn't get that impression, and in fact, one of the individuals, not the Deputy Superintendent for Administration... Who was the other gentleman?
Gary Smith.
He... My recollection is he thought this was a very good idea. And I cannot articulate why. I regret that you could not be there, but there was no resistance whatsoever to making these amendments, and they authored them. We didn't write the language because, quite frankly, we're not competent to. There was a real willingness to do this, so I intend on voting in favor of it. There may be some redundancy, but there was no hesitancy on their part, and they created the language.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on 158A? Okay. All those in favor of the substitution of 158 for 158A, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, any noes?
No.
Okay. The one, two, three, four, the ayes have it. Commissioner Brennan, did you vote yes?
No.
Oh, you voted no? Okay.
Ms. Camps said she was going to vote no, too.
Alright, the noes don't have it. So 158A is not agreed to. So we'll go back to the original resolution, which is 158. All those in favor of Resolution 158, please say aye.
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 Any noes?
No.
One no. Student rep, your advisory vote? Alright, the ayes have it, 158 passes. We are now on Resolutions Number 162 through 167, with the exception of 162A. So we're going to vote on 163 through 167, okay?
Oh, what happened in 169?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
We're on 162 through 167, but we're going to vote on 163 through 167. 162 we'll take up separately. But let's start with 162. Is there a motion to substitute... Actually, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number... Actually, let me have a motion to substitute Resolution 162 for 162A, which is before you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camps. Any discussion on 162A?
Yes. On this one, I intend to vote no on either version because I don't understand how we can have a contract coming before us with no dollar amount at all. Even if it were within the budgeted amount, we know what the budgeted amount is. Nothing else, it should have been a not to exceed.
Okay. Commissioner Elliott, anything from the Finance Committee on 162A?
Again, this was a 2BD, and I'm just not comfortable with voting on resolutions that leave the dollar amount open. I think that there should be a... In the resolution, in the language, a clause that ensures, at least for me as a member of this board, that the district is going to spend in accordance with...
Right.
I beg your pardon. I misspoke.
Would you like to come up?
I did misspoke. I see that these are all based on percent of the backlog. I did misspeak when I...
Okay, so does that get you a clarification, Commissioner Powell?
I'm certainly happy with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, folks. We're clear with this.
We just thought you needed the exercise.
Yeah, you can stand up. Yeah, keep standing, just in case. Anything else around 162A? I mean, it makes sense to me. And there was a motion to substitute. It was moved and seconded, moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Camps.
162A.
All those in favor of 162A, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we are now on Resolutions 163 through 167, which came through the Finance Committee.
Did we have two motions and two votes? I thought we just voted on the substitution.
We voted on the substitution, and then we voted to approve.
I only remember voting on the substitution.
Commissioner Elliott made a motion to substitute 162 for 162A. And that passed.
Yes.
Yes.
And then who moved, actually?
Commissioner Camps.
Okay.
Commissioner Camps, Commissioner Elliott seconded.
Ones that were two...
Yeah, Commissioner Elliott seconded, and it passed. So 162A is agreed to. 163 through 1... You know, some school boards have the electronic voting system. Maybe we should...
It's called Board Docs, Commissioner. I can get it.
163 through 167, these came through the Finance Committee and were recommended by the Finance Committee. May I have a motion to approve 163 through 167?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any questions or discussions around 163 through 167?
Just...
Commissioner Brennan, yes?
I'm sorry, but you...
Commissioner Brennan is yielding to his distinguished colleague, student rep.
That's right.
Student rep, you have a question?
There you go.
The resolution... I'm not sure if the resolutions were switched, but 163, about the purchase of the calculators?
No, 163 is VJ Stanley, Inc.
Oh, okay, so they were switched up. Wasn't it 160?
164.
164, okay. Your question about 164?
Are those calculators being distributed to all schools or like based on high school or school needs, or how is that determined? After the calculator is already purchased, where are they going? Like all the schools?
Ma'am, is that yours?
I believe they're going to... They should be going to...
They go to schools.
They should be sitting in...
We don't keep it in the basement here.
Commissioner De Los, I will need to check to see what the distribution is, if it's targeted for schools where there is a need, because I know some schools do have...
It could be for region examinations.
Or it could be even for science as well.
Ma'am, I believe it's probably for regions examinations, for exams, for regions exams, math.
It would serve that purpose.
Some of the regions exams require the use of calculators, and some of the math regions require the use.
Here we go.
Okay. There you go, we got somebody here.
Good evening, my name is John Burke. I'm a senior buyer with the purchasing department. These are a term contract for calculators. The types of calculators are on the contract were determined by the math department and math director, when we rebid the contract over a year ago. It is up to discretion of each school. These are teacher-packed calculators, and they can buy them as they need be for their classroom instruction to use for the school year.
Okay, so just as needed?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on 163 through 167?
Yes.
Yes, and we do have an amendment on 166. Commissioner Brennan, yes?
Yeah, I just... I think it's Resolution 167, according to the New Testament version of resolutions. Just a quick question, and I usually ask these questions when they involve out-of-town vendors. The service seems worthwhile. Wellagent is based in Norfolk, Virginia, to provide software for medical records for all students. Did we investigate whether or not local companies might have provided this service? What's...
Sure, Dana?
There's no hard and fast presumption against an out-of-town company, but I always like to be sure when we...
The short answer is yes, we did. We had a full bidding process from all over, and there were no local companies that provided this electronic medical record system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on 162... I mean, 163 through 167, with the exception of 166, which is another substitution? Okay. All those in favor of 163 through 167, with the exception of 166, which I will take up separately in a second, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
163.
There's one no on 163? The ayes have it? Okay. May I have a motion to...
Yes, by the way.
Thank you, student rep. May I have a motion to substitute Resolution 166 for 166A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camps. Discussion on the proposed separation?
Yeah, President Evans, again, this is one of those resolutions that came that there is no budgeted amount, and in reference to, at least in my view, the board doing its due diligence, having the language in the contract that says purchases under this contract must not exceed the budgeted amount. And it was language that was acceptable by Gary Smith and John Scanlon, I believe, that we should, at least from my perspective, in order to ensure that we are doing our due diligence, that we would have that kind of language in there. We are a board that is oversight to the district, and in terms of my responsibility, I feel comfortable with that language being included in there.
Thank you. Any... Anything else on the substitution? All those in favor of the substitution of 166A, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll vote on 166A. May I have a motion to approve 166A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion on 166A? Hearing none? All those in favor of 166A, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. We will now move into instructional technology resolutions. May I first have a motion to extend the meeting past the 8:30?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any discussion? I say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I say aye reluctantly. We are now voting on 168 through 169, which are instructional technology resolutions, which again came through the Finance Committee and were approved by the Finance Committee. May I have a motion to approve 168 through 169?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camps. Questions or comments or concerns around 168 through 169?
President Evans?
Commissioner Camps?
From the study session, I still didn't get from... For Resolution 169, what the estimate is in terms of Oracle. I know that IT is extremely expensive, but one of the questions that I had was, what is it that we're anticipating next year? Because each year I see this gut-wrenching total, and I know that it's important.
Trump?
I think we just received that answer, so if we can get it now, it'd be great.
Good evening, Commissioner Camps. I did respond to your question earlier this afternoon. However, just for the benefit of the other commissioners, Oracle and PeopleSoft, our major ERP system, every year we have maintenance, both on the database side and on the software side. Anticipated costs are just about $1 million a year, and we should expect that to increase at 4% every year. Yes.
I want to be an IT.
We're in the wrong business.
I know.
We are in the wrong business.
Wow.
And I can tell you, Commissioner, this gentleman is one of the best bargain hunters I've ever seen.
Also, on that point, we tried. Oracle, with their acquisition of PeopleSoft, and also Sun Microsystems, have become increasingly more difficult to negotiate, but they don't negotiate.
And this is a newer contract, if I remember, just a few years ago, right before...
Well, we... What you're approving tonight, hopefully, is additional licenses based on the trigger in our 2006 amended contract.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anything else on 168 through 169? All those in favor of Resolutions 168 through 169, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I oppose both.
Okay.
I did have a question about 168.
Okay, there's a question about 168.
I might have spoken, and it's similar to the one that I asked earlier. Out-of-town contractor, out-of-town vendor.
Kelp?
Yes. From Marlboro, Massachusetts. Again, we don't have Rochester companies that...
And the question is around, is there...
A company in Rochester that provides comparable service that we might have... That was interested in this.
The answer is no. This is extremely specialized consulting. Commissioner Brennan, the Schools and Libraries Division, the government has found a way to reimburse school districts all across the country for monies spent on technology in a classroom. All of us, on our phone bills, pay the universal service charge. The government has been collecting this money, I think, since the 1930s or 40s, billions of dollars. They reimburse school districts based on the level of poverty. In our instance, we get reimbursed for what's called E-Rate eligible expenses, 87%. Selt, this corporation, does this for school districts all across the country, and what we get from them is best practices, a tremendous amount of negotiation with help when we're negotiating with the telecommunications companies, intelligence on things that are coming new with respect to what is E-Ratable. This is probably one of the best things in this district. We're going to get back probably on a steady state measure, at least two, two and a half million dollars every year. That's if we don't do any projects. As an example, the VoIP project that we are coming to completion on, the total project costs about $3 million. It's going to cost us about 1.2 because a large portion of that $3 million was E-Ratable.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
And if you count the savings in telephone cost?
We will save about $200,000 a year, steady state, on that.
Thank you. Anything else on 168 through 169?
He's only been here 60 days, 90 days.
Anything else on 168, 169? Okay, I think we may have voted on, all those, did we vote on those already?
We did.
Okay, okay, those do pass. We will now vote on resolutions 170 through 192. I call these the proper re-resolutions. All those in favor of resolutions, well, may I have a motion for resolution 170 through 192, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussion or questions around resolutions 170 through 192?
President Evans?
Yes.
In reference to resolution 171, what is the amount of the flow-through funds?
Malin, this is, okay.
Is that the special education program providers?
Yes.
Yes, that's resolution 1, and it has a bunch of, a bunch of names.
The amount of flow-through funds is determined by federal and state law and it depends on the number of students that are placed either by the CSE or by parents into each of those schools.
So what is, what is the amount per child? Is that...
I would have to find out.
Okay. I have a question on 178.
Yes.
Why are we contracted with a company in Texas when we have visiting nurse service in Rochester? I don't know if they do the same services, but...
We asked this in the study session, too.
Nurse Corps is, their home offices are in Texas, but they have an office down the street from Commissioner Campos's place of employment, which is their local office.
Thank you. In reference to resolution 179, this, this assistance that RIT is providing us, well, first of all, let me just ask for the record, do we still have the biosciences and the finance programs? Do we still have those programs?
The schools.
Excuse me?
The schools.
Yes, we still have those. All right, having asked that question. Secondly, we're paying RIT, what, $221,000? Are we, are we being guaranteed that our students will be accepted at RIT if they apply? So why are we in agreement with RIT?
There's no guarantee of acceptance to the college, but, Malin?
Excellent question. When we had the review of the board resolutions, I made note of the fact that RIT has been very tenacious in being very specific about what the requirements are for students who want to enter their program. In fact, they have a visual that they presented to the teachers and administrators at Franklin for each one of their colleges, at the very bottom outlining what courses student needs, students needed to take at this time while in high school to support them transitioning to the program. Also, when the program initially started, RIT prevailed upon the Franklin administrators and teachers to attend to students' reading and math scores to ensure that they had the basic skills to begin to transition into this kind of program.
Well, I guess my concern is, number one, if, if there's not a relationship further than we're paying them $221,000 and that there is not a guarantee that our students will be accepted, we don't even know, do we know for sure if our students are going to be...
Well, and an additional element, and this comprises a number of elements that I can outline for you, but an additional piece of this program involves collaboration between Franklin teachers with the appropriate staff in the three colleges at RIT.
Yeah, but are our, are our students planning to go to RIT?
They are involved in summer programs and throughout the academic year as well.
It's an early college, it's an early college experience for many of our kids. There's no guarantee of acceptance by the college when they finish high school.
Okay, I guess that I would have wanted more, for $221,000, I would have wanted them to offer some scholarships or something to that.
Well, this, young people have not evolved through this process yet. They started this beginning in eighth grade.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, okay. And then the question, you can just stay there, Deputy Superintendent, in reference to the resolution 180, we're paying Brian Stratton $87,000, but we're, we're paying RIT $221,000.
Smaller number of young people involved at the three schools and a very, a very different program.
Program. And Commissioner, I was keynote for Brian Stratton last, this past commencement, actually I met a number of kids who actually were in the program who graduated from Brian, so went on to the school and got their degrees from, from the college.
Thank you. And then I have a couple more questions. What is the percentage of students in the district that are autistic?
Kirsten can give you more details, but that number is emerging.
We've seen a definite increase and for that reason, about a month ago, I made a visit to a camp set up by parents of autistic children with the idea that hopefully that can be part of our summer offerings and follow up with programs to meet their needs because those numbers are growing. Kirsten can give you some further detail.
I believe there's approximately 400 students in the district who are on the autism spectrum disorder. If you'll note, the wording of that resolution, it says that the Strong Center for Developmental Disabilities is going to be providing professional and technical support for us for all students with developmental disabilities. And children on the autism spectrum are just one type of a developmental disability. They're going to be supporting us with a lot of other very specific disability types as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one final question. What has been the temporary staffing patterns historically? Because on that resolution, I think there's...
The numbers there?
...about listed, 189. Yeah, there's no, there's no dollar amount on resolution 189. So my question is, what's been the, historically, what's been the temporary staffing patterns?
Michelle?
And how much do we anticipate we're going to spend in these services?
I'd like to introduce to you Director of Temporary Services, Dr. Narlene Reagan's, and she is our specialist with this employment store.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. This particular amendment is a continuation of the contract that the district has had for the last couple of years with the Employment Store, which is a woman, a woman-owned company. Actually, our involvement with the Employment Store, from the Human Capital, the Office of Human Capital Initiative's perspectives, has actually been instrumental in helping us reduce the temporary services cost. So our cost was, for the '07-'08 school year, we paid to the Employment Store $2.4 million. For this prior school year, it was $1.8 million. So we've actually saved about $600,000 by actively being involved in monitoring the temporary services usage at our schools, within our MIS department and here in central office.
So what, what kinds of positions are we hiring temporary staff for?
In the schools, it's primary clerical position, so it's recovering for when the school secretary is out. For example, especially in schools that only have one clerical person. In central office, it can be some of our, what we would refer to as our ASR or mid-level manager positions, in which we're looking for someone to just come in until we can actually backfill that position.
Thank you.
Any others? Commissioner Campos?
For 191, I saw somewhat of a breakdown where I had asked for, I'm all in favor for a good learning environment in order to enrich the learning experience. What I had asked for was a breakdown as to, in terms of last year, I remember approving a resolution and it was around the same amount. How many times do we utilize that? And I, I got a lot, but what I wanted was a breakdown as to how many times we actually use it for this amount.
Who wants this? This is, yeah, because also Chuck, Chuck is here as well, so this was an attempt for us to provide one resolution versus coming every month.
Right.
With different resolution. I also understand that professional development is looking to perhaps use this side as well.
Right, based on our conversation...
Would like to use 690, but...
Well, yes, we are going to try to make better use of that facility and not have to go to this full amount. We're clearly aware of the economic implications.
Yes.
But we do want to have a large venue available should we have that, that need.
We can fit almost, what, about 1,200 people in that? Yes.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
For resolution, I think it's 177, for the two crisis intervention counselors, I was wondering why we picked St. Joseph's Villa because, like, I know, like, the center, it's 176 on mine, but if I'm correct, all the...
It's 177.
St. Joseph's Villa is resolution 177.
Okay.
I think this...
I have Jeanette Silver's on my list, I'm not sure why. Go ahead, Jeanette.
It's a flow-through, but I can hear the question.
Why are we using St. Joseph's Villa?
It's a flow-through and it's under Nickelby, so...
No Child Left Behind.
No Child Left Behind, I'm sorry. Under No Child Left Behind. It's a flow-through, so the state determines where the money's going to go and that's who, and they service our students in that building.
Okay, I just thought of the district's...
I'm sorry?
I was just thinking of the district's...
Okay.
For special program at that school?
And just for clarification, many of these resolutions are flow-through resolutions. They come to, I don't even know why they come to the board, but the state makes a determination on where the money goes. So we'll have to get clarification on why they come to the board in the first place. Anything else on 170 through 192? All those in favor of 170 through 192, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's?
172, 175, 179, 181, 184, 186, 187, 191.
And abstaining on 175, 176, and 187?
Any of those overlap?
Madam Clerk, have you captured that?
Yes.
There's no overlap.
Oh, actually...
There's no overlap.
175 did not pass.
Which one?
175.
Okay.
I have an extension and a no, and also...
Commissioner, if I may request that perhaps we, we revisit these again. These are services for special children for 175. This is Hillside Family Agencies. This is, perhaps you can discuss this afterwards offline.
Okay.
I have a que, is this question time or...
Well, we're through with 170 through 192 and we're going to move on to 194 through 195.
Well, I guess the, the point is, I just heard Superintendent say we'll revisit these. I guess I just need to under, point of order understanding, if, if a resolution is vote no, why do we bring it back up at another time to vote, to approve it? If it dies, why doesn't it just die? Because we've had other resolutions that have, that have been voted down, but we've waited until another time until the people, till people who are going to vote yes for come. Just doesn't seem to me as if that that is a democratic process.
But Commissioner, if I may, if I may, sorry.
I'm sorry, maybe I could, it's, it seems on its face, it's actually kind of a reasonable question, but I think the way this works is that individuals who vote no can seek reconsideration of a resolution. And the, and the idea is that if, that individuals who may have had reservations that caused them to vote no in the first place and then with subsequent information or adjustments or changes, they then have the opportunity to ask that that be reconsidered. Is that correct? So someone who votes yes...
Yes.
On a, on a resolution that's defeated, cannot bring it up for reconsideration. It requires someone who voted no.
I believe that's correct, Commissioner.
That's correct, but you can always bring back a different resolution with different language.
Yes.
That's, that's right.
But in addition to that, an absentee did not cast a vote for the prevailing side. So an absentee can bring it up for reconsideration. The rule, the governing rule is that they have, that someone, that in order for something to come up for reconsideration, it has to be from someone on the prevailing side. Well, someone who is absent did not contribute to the yes votes, they're part of the no votes effectively because of their absence. So if something can be revisited by someone who was absent because they were not part of the, because they're part of the prevailing side.
Is there a language that, so that I can look at that and...
It's Robert's rule.
Clear or how that, yeah, I don't, I don't read that very well, so...
If someone can get a copy of it. We could ask the parliamentarian.
A sheet of that.
It's in the drawer, yeah. And Commissioner, if I, if I may, one of the reasons that I, for instance, look at resolution numbers 175, this is a resolution, we are passed through for this money, it's Title I D dollars, Part D dollars, from Title I office, going to provide a reading teacher to students who are at the Hillside Family Agencies. So for us to deny that kind of service, I also believe is educational neglect. So it's not, I believe, again, the rule of order is, is one thing, but we also have to consider the services to children at the center, especially when the money doesn't really belong to us.
The state dictates where it goes, but, but again, 172 through 192, we've already voted on it, so I need to move on to the next resolution.
Commissioner Evans, let me, rather than rely on absent persons, I would like to change my votes on 187 and on 175 to a no vote.
Okay, that's fine. Reflect it in the record, Madam Clerk? All right.
I voted yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to resolutions, we'll, we'll move on to resolutions 194 through 195. May I have a motion to approve resolutions 194 through 195?
So moved. Second.
Is there a second? Any questions around resolutions 194 through 195?
I didn't see these.
Hearing none? All those in favor of 194 through 195, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move on to resolutions 197 through 198.
196, did you say?
I'm sorry, 196 through...
Well, not 196 was voted on...
Oh, we voted on 196.
Under Human Capital?
Right.
Yes.
So 197 and 198.
So moved.
196 was a Human Capital resolution, which we voted on, under our first block. 197 through 198, may I have a motion to approve 197 through 198?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No to both.
All right, the ayes have it.
Mr.?
This concludes our...
We did not consider resolution 193 or 195.
196, those were doing Human Capital?
Yeah. But they were...
Okay. May I have a motion to approve resolution number 193, please?
So moved.
Second.
This is a human resources resolution, so any conversation would have to be germane to, to human resources. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any, any no's? The ayes have it. And resolution number 196, which is also a human resources resolution, it's an amendment, amended, all those in favor, I may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Any discussion around 196?
Yeah, what, under what grounds do we, is a resignation deleted?
Ms., Ms. Dr. Hancock, she still here?
If they rescind.
Or Ms., Ms., what's her name?
You could, you could take it if you'd like.
Thought you'd escape.
Under what conditions can a resignation be deleted? I believe was the question. If they rescind, right?
Resolution 196, Dr. Hancock.
Yes, that one was rescinded because teachers, this particular teacher went to her union, RTA. She has a certain amount of time in which she can rescind her resignation, she did. And the union, we had a case with this particular one and we had to meet on it and it ended in a termination. She's a non-tender teacher. Mm-hmm. So we, once it went, it already came to the board packet as a resignation. Excuse me, I was running, I was trying to catch someone out of breath.
So elsewhere in the packet, there's a termination.
There's a termination of the same person.
That replaces the resignation.
Correct.
All those in favor of resolution 196, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. This is a human resources resolution, so student rep, you don't vote on that. There are some gifts here, one of, one is from an organization that's near and dear to my heart, the Monroe County Fair Association. Commissioner Powell, any others?
Now, won't you, won't you do the announcements this time? Won't you do the announcements this time?
Yeah, let me just thank the Monroe County Fair and Recreation Association who donated scarves, hats, and mittens to our students, and I hope that we can give these things out while we're giving out the book bags next week. This is very nice stuff. It's not just cheap. It's nice items that I would, I wouldn't mind having some of it. So I want to thank the Monroe County Fair and Recreation Association for their generous donation. I think that's all the gifts we have, correct? Unfinished business from previous meeting? We have none. Any new business to come for the board?
I have a few motions that I'd like to make.
You have something under new business?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Elliott?
President Evans, I move that the Rochester Board of Education hires a full-time nutritionist to oversee the preparation of food, the quality of food, the quality of the facilities where the food is prepared, and oversee the development of the school menus. I further move that this position report directly to the Rochester Board of Education.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Point of order, Commissioner Powell?
This is something that could have been provided to the board in writing, 48-hour notice, and I ask that we not consider it until such notice is provided.
Yeah, Commissioner Elliott, the motion is out of order because it was not provided in writing to the board within 48 hours.
Our provider.
There would just be a need a motion to suspend the rules, but if you provide that, we can take it up at the next meeting?
Okay, I'll just go for it. President Evans, I move that no students, staff, or supplies be housed at the property known as 690 St. Paul's Street.
Point of order, same reason.
And further, President Evans, I move that we enter into a lawsuit against Dante Galasey and Genesee Valley Real Estate Company to break the lease between Genesee Valley Real Estate Company and the Rochester Board of Education as a result of the misrepresentation of this facility as a usable facility for students and teachers of the Rochester City School District.
Once again, Commissioner Elliott, point of order, it needs to be provided within the 48-hour rule. And just another point of order, any legal or lawsuits take place in the context of conversations in executive session?
All right. President Evans, I move that the Rochester Board of Education amends Policy 8400.23 to revoke the language for purposes of qualifying for transportation. The minimum distance between a student's primary residence and his or her school shall be one and one-half miles as a matter of policy for students in grades K through 8.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Point of order is agreed to, Commissioner, and the same rules apply as the 48-hour rule, Commissioner.
President Evans, I move to amend Policy 3131 to read as follows. The salary of the superintendent of schools, additional benefits, vacation entitlement, leave, and other terms and conditions of employment shall be set forth and made, and be made part of the contract between the superintendent and the Board of Education. And upon execution of this contract, salary increases, benefits, vacation leave, and other terms and conditions of employment should not be granted without the approval of the President of the Board and consent by the majority of the Board.
Point of order, and furthermore, as the Chair of the Policy Committee, she had an opportunity to put it through that committee.
Point of order again, and again with written notice, Commissioner, we can take these up.
All right.
Within the 48-hour rule, just provide it in writing to the board.
President Evans, I move to have Jean-Claude Bressard removed as superintendent of the Rochester City School District due to a breach of contract between the Jean, between, the contract between the Jean, between Jean-Claude Bressard and the Rochester Board of Education and unsatisfactory leadership.